Thank you.
There you go.
And we do have some public with us here in the building and we will start with public comment. Mr. Whitman, do you have public comment or are you just bored this afternoon?
I have.
Okay.
I would like to ask for an update on your negotiations as you've called it, for cleanup of the Dorchester Road junkyard.
Okay. We don't have anything to say right at the moment, but we are continuing, we're speaking with legal counsel and we are slowly working at some kind of resolution, at which point when we can say something, we will. We will give you an update.
Are you, are you taking active ownership of junkyard oversight? And are you allowing continued dumping or placing of materials in this junkyard?
I'd just say we're not allowing anything and we are taking ownership of the thing, but it has to go through the courts. We don't have, we can't send the highway crew up there to clean up everything with excavators.
No.
But we have to get a court order that settles the problem. And it's been going on for years, so I don't, I don't, because the court may well side with the owners of the property.
To allow a non-resident to keep taking stuff there? Is there a court date?
There is no, there is nothing yet. There's, there's, the lawyers have been put on it, but we're waiting to hear.
We really.
Also, I just want to toss out, I mean, I understand the curiosity and your interest, but what we have here is sort of a legal dispute between the select board representing the town and a couple of private individuals with respect to the way they're using their property. And it makes me uncomfortable a little bit. I'm not, I mean, that's something that we're obviously working on, well, we are working on, but I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable discussing the details of that with, with, you know, with other members of the public who just have a curiosity about what's going on. There's, there's some privacy interests there that regardless of the underlying substantive issue are, are delicate, you know, reputational issues and things like that. So we're a little bit close-lipped about it, but that doesn't, you shouldn't, you shouldn't understand that to mean that we're ignoring the issue.
Thank you, thank you. Do you act, do you, are you aware that these non-residents continue to put stuff there?
Michael, we, we are not going to engage in a conversation with you, so you can ask as many questions as you want, but you're not going to get any further information from us on this issue.
Is there any way to discuss the topic of, general topic of junkyards in line? Is there any way to do it other than getting on the agenda?
Well, generally speaking, in the zoning ordinance, it's not allowed. But making that a practice is not that simple. I mean, this is not, this has gone on for a long time. It's likely to be problems that are far greater than just.
Well, I think we can't really, we really can't.
No, I'm just.
It's a, it's a, you could go to the planning or zoning board to have them address some of those questions, but in terms of what we are doing, we are, our hands are really tied in terms of not being able to discuss the situation. I understand the frustration, but that's really where we are.
All right, thank you very much.
No, it's any more than we could discuss you or your, you know, any issue that might come up about you personally, which there isn't any that I know of, but we couldn't discuss that in public either. I mean, it's, it's a.
Yeah, if you were in a fight with the select board or in a disagreement with the select board and some other person, you know, came in and wanted to know what was going on and what the details of that dispute were, you would probably be uncomfortable with that sort of a disclosure and that sort of a discussion, and that's what we're trying to be sensitive to.
Thank you.
And we have someone else in the audience, are you?
My name's Jeff from R and D Paying, I'm just here for the opening of a payment detail.
Okay, we're getting that after our scheduled public hearing, which is in five minutes.
No, I'm sorry, the public hearing is about a grant that bids didn't get added on to the agenda.
But we can do the bids.
Absolutely.
But the public hearing is at 1:15, so after the public hearing, we can.
And you have two people on Zoom.
Mr. Brown, did you have anything for the board in public comment?
I thank you for saying as much as you have regarding the, the junkyard issue. I appreciate, and I thank you that you're, you're continuing to focus on it and attempt to make progress. That's, that's a, I find that a helpful report. And then I have no other public comments.
Okay, thank you. Deana, who else do we have on?
We have Jan Williams.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to mention that looking over the way that the, the meeting of November 16th was conducted and particularly the number of items that you threw into a long, non-public session, it looks to me like you guys are sort of stumbling on following the regulations for non-public, at least from what I can glean from listening to the meeting and also looking at your minutes. So I just want to, you know, point out that not everything that you talked about at that meeting really qualified to be in non-public. So I'm just gonna throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and who else do we have?
Construction, something, Construction Summary, I have no clue who this is.
Okay, who's on with us right now?
They're muted.
They have to unmute themselves. I can ask them to unmute themselves and tell me who they are. I suspect there's somebody who's just interested about the bid. They don't have a bid, but there, there's.
But they might like to tell us who they are.
Oh, wait. Jill from Construction Summary, her name is.
Okay. All right, so that's a non-comment. All right, and we now have three minutes to go before we have a public hearing. And so in that three minutes, how about we look at approving the November 30th minutes? Have you had a chance to?
Yeah, they're much fun to me, all of them.
Thank you.
I'll second them.
Thank you. David moved and seconded, and if we have no comments on those, I'll give a voice vote. All those in favors, they eye?
No.
David eye.
And Judy eye. So those minutes are approved. And let's see, well. I hate just sitting here doing nothing.
Manifest.
We could do the manifest. We have two manifests. Manifest one is in the amount of $999,398.47, which includes $950,000 going to school. And manifest number two is in the amount of $27,077.20. What do we wish to do in manifest one and two? Either together or separately?
I, I can.
No? Okay, thank you.
I'll second them.
Do you know that one with the, we have that missing invoice, presumably we get a replacement invoice, right? So.
Yes, that's, that's, the only reason why I was paying it was because I had received the replacement invoice.
Okay, so all those in favor of these two manifests say aye?
Aye.
David eye.
And Judy eye. Those are approved.
So.
Okay, very good. I am just gonna hang out because if we start, anything else, we'll have to stop. In a minute, we will be opening a public hearing on the Work Invest New Hampshire EMT Grant. This is Emergency Technician Training Grant Program. It is now 1:15, I will call the public hearing open. And Deana, would you like to give a little bit of an explanation?
I will. This was a grant that was received by State of New Hampshire Labor Department. It, it was an incentive to get people to get qualified as EMTs because of course we're always looking for, well, whether they're volunteer or paid, they're always looking for them. So we, up at the fire station, they offered the course. There were people that signed up, there was a, I think, seven or eight people from Lime, it was great. So this grant covered the cost of the course, the certification, anything else they needed and, you know, so. And this is just a payback, 100% payback. It didn't cost the town of Lime anything. Other than the use of our training room, which is fabulous.
And so we have seven or eight newly minted EMTs?
Yes, these are some younger, younger adults, which is really great.
They have energy.
And the grant, yes, the grant was in the amount of $10,500.
Okay. And anyone listening or in the room have any comments or is the board, what do we? I'm presuming that we wish to accept this grant.
I would encourage you to accept the grant.
Thank you.
Well, easy, easy to agree on money coming in.
Yes, yes. Well, I will move it, who would like to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor of accepting this grant, say aye?
Ben, aye.
David eye.
And Judy eye. We are good to go.
Thank you, and Chief Rich thanks you.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, and not hearing any other comments, so I will close the public hearing at 1:17.
Was that quick here?
Yes. As Ben says, it's always easy to accept the money coming in. Great, we have done that one. And we may or may not be seeing our emergency management director and road agent in a little while, but moving on, we can do a brief budget review. We have an updated budget sheet was handed out by Jordan just a few minutes ago. And I just wanted to note one thing about it, that the, in going through it, the library has removed $5,000 from their budget, so their increase, their budget, operating budget is 2.3%, which is really nice that they took another look at that. Deana and I have taken another look at this. We are down to a 3.7% increase for the operating budget. We started at seven something.
Originally.
Originally. So being hard at work on that. And we have, also in your packet, there is an update on the capital reserve sheets. This will be a Warren article. Last year, the total funding into the capital reserve and trust funds was $390,000. This year, we are proposing $405,000 with sort of a note that next year, we're putting $200,000 this year into the vehicle capital reserve fund, but next year, we, and continuing years, we'll probably need to put $250,000 in because the cost of vehicles is wildly increasing. Let me see, so if Ben and David want to take a kind of a quick look at those proposed fundings for the capital reserve fund.
This sheet, guys.
Yep, this one. I think.
I like that one.
David here. We just need to, okay. We just need to approve those so we can have an update for the next budget meeting. I got, thank you.
How does the project that we're contemplating or starting with the Edgel Bridge play into the Capital Bridge Reserve Fund here?
Well, we're hoping to, we're going to have, we think, some donated funds, we're going to have some other funds, we're going to probably need to take some out of this bridge fund here, which.
Quite a bit out of this bridge fund.
We have $461,000 and change in the bridge capital reserve fund. We're proposing putting 50 in, but we'll be taking a good bit of that out for the Edgel Bridge.
And it really depends on how many donations you get from the campaign that we have the two anonymous donors that have started.
Do we, do we have anything else going on bridge-wise that we anticipate is going to require funds from this fund? Are there other bridges where we're, in the short run? The reason, the reason I'm asking is, you know, is $50,000 adequate? Or is it realistic?
Well, I think what you should look at.
What we can see coming.
What you should look at for the Edgel Bridge is you have the, the donations and then we have some state funding that we've gotten, which is almost $100,000. Then, and that's all set aside for the Edgel Bridge. And then.
And we still think the, the cost on Edgel repair is likely to be in the range of $800,000?
Right, yeah, $790,000 was the estimate. And then, you know, in a while, I don't know how soon you want to do this, but probably pretty soon, we'll sit down and, and look at those numbers and talk about it, and you should probably, instead of putting more in this fund, take, plan on using some of this fund, plus have a separate warrant article.
For additional funds.
For additional funds for the Edgel Bridge. Then you're not voting to put some in there and then turn around and taking it right out.
Yeah, okay, good.
And that way.
That perfectly answers the question, right?
Yeah.
We're not going to drain this thing, we're going to fund the repair with a warrant article. Okay?
Okay.
Why no funding for the emergency highway repair capital reserve fund?
Emergency, because we have, well.
We have enough and we don't use it?
Well, we do use it when we have these unexpected storm events.
Right, and there's probably enough in there for unexpected, but you also have your class five road that you build, you know, up to. So between the two, you have half a million. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I would venture a guess that in the next year and subsequent years, several of these funds will need to be increased greater than what we've done the last several years. We've been trying to get a handle on the operating costs, but at some point, these Warren articles are probably going to have to, these capital reserve funds be increased.
Well, what I would love.
Yes, my dear.
Is somebody who's very good at looking at complicated spreadsheets that track our, all of our capital reserve funds and, and is good at planning out. I mean, I have it out to 2033, but, you know. It's the whole factoring in, okay, what, what percentage should I be using to increase each, each year's cost? You know, the vehicle, you know, they say 4%, but is that really a factual thing now? You know, everything's gotten so expensive, should that go up? Should it go down, you know? So it would be great if we have some financial wizard guru in town. Or maybe, maybe David Kahn is the one that's a financial wizard guru, I don't know.
That's just big spreadsheet.
Yes, so, yeah. Well, this one is just the vehicle and heavy equipment.
Okay.
But there's the other one.
Yes, yeah.
Mike Smith and Dick Jones.
Well, Dick, Dick's.
I'm happy to ask Dick if you, if you guys are okay with me asking him to take a look at it.
I would be happy to.
Okay, good.
I'm happy to do that.
I'm happy to work with him, too.
And I just took the cog because I said after the public hearing, we would do those two bids, which is not going to take very long, Scotty, so thanks for showing up, we'll get to you afterwards. So Deana has received. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for letting me do that, that'd be totally good. Okay, so yes, this is, this is for the two projects for 2024. So it's Grafton Turnpike and?
Acorn.
Acorn. I need to bring my copies over.
And that would be 25?
2024.
24.
Yeah. So we have a bid from Blacktop that we received.
Okay.
So Acorn Hill is $102,508. And Grafton Turnpike is $56,538. And then we have R and D, I think that's it, R and D, yeah, R and D Paying.
Is that our friend Jill?
No.
Notice somebody else?
That's this gentleman back here.
That's who, okay. Sorry.
Okay, and then Acorn Hill is $93,185. And Grafton Turnpike is $56,810.
And I should say that we will, Deana will probably photocopy these and email them to the select board. We will look at them, we will not make a decision today, and we will also let Scott have a look at them. He is our road agent. And our next meeting is two weeks hence, and between now and then, if we haven't forgotten, it would probably be on the agenda for an awarding of the project.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, go ahead, give me a call.
Yeah, well.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, before we leave the budgeting, that at last night's budget committee meeting, the school presented a pretty complete budget. Their operating budget for 2025, because they're on a different fiscal year, had a 3.42 percentage increase. They have a Warren article which covers the union contract. I thought you couldn't stay away. Which is a percentage increase of 2.59. And so a total change that they're projecting with Warren articles and operating budget of 6.01% increase. Just since we were talking budgeting. Those numbers, for anyone who's interested, are out there. Did I say that right, Rich?
That's, that's my understanding, I think it's a pretty fair summary, and if anybody's really challenged, you can grab one of those copies there.
And there's also copies on, on, on the Lime website, on Town website, there's a little tab that says 2024 budgeting or town meeting, and in there are all the spreadsheets and stuff.
Oh, great, thank you, Deana. Okay.
I just wanted to bring up, we talked about it any time, but I was approached, and probably some of you were too, about Lime boosters.
Yeah.
Don't, well, we've got Scotty here, let's take Scotty and then we'll do.
No, it doesn't matter when. Or I forgot about it, I don't like being, talk to people. Talk to and not remember.
Not remember, right.
Okay. Scott, you have the floor.
He's waiting.
Well, I really have, I mean, well, my kid's supposed to do.
But you could talk about the backhoe.
Yes. Since we got the excavator, tobacco's been taken off the, it's not even on the list.
Oh, okay.
This town can't go without a backhoe.
And the backhoe's got wheels.
So we need to go back on the replacement schedule?
Well, this is my suggestion.
Okay.
And I was gonna actually ask Ben to ask Dr. Jim Bagge, maybe, about a used one that maybe we could purchase for around $100,000. We don't, with the excavator, we don't need a new one. But this one is getting to the point where we need to put a lot of money into it. And it's, what'd they say, it's a 98.
Tobacco?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, here, hang on, where are your phone numbers?
But no one got taken off the list because it was said to. The excavator's gonna take the place of the backhoe.
And it doesn't.
You can't be without a backhoe.
You, you just can't go and fix a cobbler or something like that with an excavator.
Right.
Well, you can, you can load it up and go, but I mean, it's not. If you're going to a lot of places, you're not, you know.
Well, and when Scott and I sat down and did this, the load, first off, the grader is 2017, the loader is 18, and the excavator.
Loader is?
Is 19.
Wait a minute, where's that?
Okay. And the loader is a 12-year replacement, and everything else was a 15. So Scott was thinking, if we, the excavator, just use it until whatever.
It goes to heaven.
Yeah. Don't put anything in and don't replace that because.
Okay.
A loader is, I mean, a backhoe is more important to him. And then, you know, years down the road, when we don't have an excavator, you can rent one or you can.
For what?
I mean, I rented, I rented a big one for two months on Goose Pond.
Right.
And I think it was, can't remember the exact, but around 10, 11,000 dollars.
I was gonna say it was 47 a month, I think.
Yeah, so.
So that's a lot less expensive than the actual purchasing.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna use it, I'm not gonna use it for.
You're not gonna wear out that excavator either, so.
Right, I'm not.
How many hours does it have on it?
I.
Did you look, oh, you didn't. But the hydraulic oil and the filters and all that are.
Expensive.
Ungodly expensive.
Should we consider selling it?
I thought about that, but you're not gonna get anything for it. And the only thing, I mean, we have the, the compactor for it, and it just, it speeds up cobbler's.
So we'll use it, but intermittently?
Yeah.
So the reason that backhoe is a more efficient tool than the excavator is just because it has wheels and it's easier to get to places?
Yeah, I mean, if you gotta go, like, say you gotta go to Goose Pond, then you gotta go to Backhill. I mean, it's around east.
Probably gotta plug a cobbler and just gotta dig it out. Doesn't make any sense to load the excavator on a trailer.
Because of the fact of unloading and unplugging, it takes an hour or two each.
And, you know, I mean, like, when we have a heavy rain event and the cobbler's a plug, we're running around everywhere trying to unplug them, especially in the same time. we're running around everywhere trying to unplug them, especially in the springtime.
And the backhoe just, you just do the work and then just drive it in.
They said the backhoe is, it was before my time, they said the backhoe is just run out into the ground, well, you can't run that into the ground, because it's pretty much running to the ground.
It's already there.
Yeah, I mean...
So what do you want us to do, you want us to start putting money, funding a, a replacement for the backhoe?
As I said, I mean, I would do, I'd be happy to do a used one, I mean...
Well, but no, I mean, if we're not gonna use the excavator, and the backhoe is really the key tool, and we need one, why wouldn't we just plan for it and get one? I, I, I don't, I mean, I understand you're being sensitive to not wanting to dump a bunch of money in the, but maybe we, we plan for it over a couple of years, and we find it, we buy, wh- wh- you know what?
Honestly, I don't think that backhoe will make it a couple of years.
So, the question is, what does a new one cost, and what does a used one cost, and what are the, I mean, that's the decision then, we gotta make, is, does it make sense to buy a new one, does it make sense to buy a used one? What are the costs, what are the benefits of those two choices, can you?
I mean, I think a new one, you're gonna be looking at, like, one eighty.
Hundred eighty thousand dollars?
Hundred eighty thousand, where a used one, I think you can get a real good used one for a hundred or a hundred and eighty.
But, I think the important point right now is, this is the perfect time to bring it up, because he has time to go gather that information. You guys could make that decision at your next meeting, and it would still be okay for the warrant, or for any change to the warrant money.
If we wanted a, a warrant article for twenty-four.
When you buy a new one, do you get a warranty, and is there, what are the maintenance and repair costs like on this type of piece of equipment?
It's probably gonna be close to the, the loader. Um, but yes, I'm buying warranties, I'm buying warranty with anything, yeah. I think you can get up to, I know Kat, I didn't want to tell you yet, Kat, I think you can get up to seven years, um, on certain things.
And that would be heavy equipment?
Then it jumps.
Yes.
Okay.
It jumps up on some things, um...
Well, so that's really, those are the factors I think we would wanna think through in terms of making a decision about new or used, is, you know, if we're gonna buy a used one, it's gonna save us eighty grand, but then we're gonna have, you know, fifteen grand of maintenance every year.
Yeah, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm just throwing, pulling it up, by the way.
And heavy equipment.
I mean, really, we don't, we haven't put a lot in this backhoe, like...
Yeah. Or do a warrant article?
I just don't think we really ought, I mean, I think it's...
And the existing one is about to fail, you think?
I do, I mean, the brakes are very spongy.
Um, what would it cost to fix the existing one? It's just not worth it?
I know, the last time we looked, uh, it was around twenty thousand, I think, for just the various, two of the various.
Seems like a lot, doesn't it?
Anything with heavy equipment is a lot.
Could you?
But they have to, they want it down there. So we have to take it down there.
Where, down there is where?
Uh... Yeah.
Forest Green, yeah, anyways.
Concord.
Concord.
Springfield.
Okay, so, and, and that, you can't drive it down there, you have to truck it.
So they truck it, and their shop rates are incredible.
Yeah.
So can you kind of pull together, you and your friend Dina here, with nothing else to do, and pull together some stuff for two weeks from now, if you could? So we can see if we could, if there's any way that we can do something for twenty-four's budget? Everyone will love that. But if you're using it all the time...
I meant to bring it up at, like, the last meeting, and I probably should've brought it up a year ago, two years ago, but...
No, I'm not.
You know, it's just something that, you know, I've been thinking about, I mean, if that fails, I mean, we're...
Yeah, kind of in trouble.
And we need the backhoe, in case we have to load sand. You know, if something happens to the loader.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just...
So let's get some numbers on it, and
I think I...
We can figure out a proposal, whether it's some to come out of the capital reserve funds, and some to come direct from meeting and warrant article, or...
I mean, the only reason I was thinking here is, was just
To save some...
Money, save the town money, I mean...
Which I'm all in favor of, but I want, I want to save the town money in the aggregate, not just...
Right, but you are right, at this, you know...
New is better.
Right, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Pusley?
Oh, I was just messaging you.
Yes?
Thank you. Michael, did you need a non-public? I just sent you a message.
My
He asked.
Question is...
Is it reputation?
Could involve reputation, is my only concern. I mean, it's not a town personnel thing, but it's just...
If it was a member of the public, and it could be reputation, we need to air on the conservative side, I would ask Mr. Brown, he can turn on his recording, and I think I don't think we're gonna stand on public, or gonna come back to public, right? We're gonna talk a little bit about a few other things, and we do have the ballot clerks to sign, but you don't care about that, so...
But you also have another...
Another non-public.
Non-public.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how long, I don't know how long the other discussions will take, but if they can wait a few minutes.
What do you wanna do? The one other thing was going to be a, a reminder and discussion about the common use permit, but we could put that off for another time?
Mm-hmm.
So that you could just leave, and we'll do the non-publics.
That's, that's certainly fine with me, yes.
Okay, I hate for you to sit out there, hold me.
So if you do this
Talk about people behind their back.
Before you go into non-public, I mean, you just have to make a motion to appoint.
Okay, so you hang on, you two guys.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
So, I will move appointment of the ballot clerks.
Fourteen. Ballot clerks.
Well, it could.
Okay. And I'll need a second.
Hold a second.
Thank you, David.
Ben, aye.
Even aye.
And Judy, aye. So, the fourteen ballot clerks are approved, we will sign their, they have been proposed by the town clerk for the upcoming elections, and we will sign the appointment cards. And then, I will move to go into non-public session under the RSA ninety-one A three, Roman numeral two, little letter C, reputation with other members of the select board, remember.
Hold a second.
Thank you, David, all those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye.